Did you want me to find it out?
Pardon? Well, I have a good idea. I'm just wanted. I were proud of it. Then I.
This is just a big concern.
I don't remember. I always. I can't.
I did it for our first time. I'm gonna go with your eyes.
Have you found you? My name is. I'm here in the house. Well, I don't. That's what. Okay. Are you ready to do? You know. Yeah.
That's right. No, I just want her to.
Well, it was.
Hi.
Fine. Other. Right. God. Uh, I. It was a. I'm not.
Right.
Or near a piece of. Is that? We can summarize it out.
Is there a line?
Simple. But.
I'm honored to be related.
One day, yeah, one day. People are heading. Now I'm not.
There you go. Oh, I respect. You all mistake. Hold up. Sound about Mark. You can go ahead. Try and help. Get you later. You're just gonna get it. No, we're divorced. We, your guys have been part of the ice cream. So I think it's gonna be. Still. Also, there's so many people there who are way the ice stuff. And they're right here. I think there are five or six people strange. A lot of the ice that they're skiing on a full day. You can look at that. That has to be. And then, God, this, this is gonna want to. Really, I hope this last year's kind of thing. The cameras. I mean, well, I never grew up, you know, last year. I work out with the whole town. About about six inches of power. Today, I could use very little energy. Extra work jump. I, as of Friday at three forty-five, was like, I assume we. Hasn't started to steal the shovel. I never know. Never know. It just, it's funny that it's. Wow. I think. Here in your ways. I do all the. Like that. Never know. They remind me of it. I'll, I'll.
Sure. I'm. How? Why? We want.
Oh.
So.
No.
I didn't.
There's certain, she actually. I was about. She said she.
She doesn't pay for the.
I.
I thought.
I thought.
I didn't. So, anyway, those are the. Turner died in. Sorry. Over. Oh, my God. That was a thing.
Thank you. It's, um. It's forty minutes.
I'm.
I have a job. You got. I.
Yeah.
Oh. From that small part. I first. No, it sounds like. Oh. I'm in the door between the lights on.
Um, maybe you identify which area you want us to use to. That's the only thing. All the time, they all look the same. So maybe we can help these by going.
That, that was the.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
You're all, yeah, yeah, that is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so, so, so maybe we do a pizza.
Okay. I don't. Now, let's see. I hate it. I'm.
Oh, yeah. I was sure. So, I mean, while I. It's supposed to be all.
Yeah. Just to use their assignment.
Mr. Cousins, how many pieces, uh, are? I mean. Are you sure?
Yeah. If I need help.
Oh, you don't get back. Appreciate it.
Do you want? So. Didn't hear the mission. I just.
Oh, it's also. Just. I said.
Yeah.
People that. Twice that. Yes. Yeah. I don't think I. For slippery.
If you don't feel that.
You. Right. For fear of that. Something special. You are. And he was. Yeah, you know. He sang every, even the songs he sang. It's impressive. And he. He looks. Oh, my. Hey.
Tricks. I am. Generally. If you.
Clear. I thought, I thought. I thought he was. Everybody run out. How do you say? Yeah. I was literally. Yeah. Yeah. It was like. Lunchtime. It hurts. Her part. I didn't get. Six more. Well, walked in. They had a step. Yep. Dancing in the bus. So. Stuff that ones like that. It's not. So. I don't know this. You know, present people like this. Pizza, everything, whatever. Come over there. Right. As I screwed my ankle. So I didn't get. They got the hours. About when he's done. Doesn't hear those stuff right there. I don't know. It's tiresome. Move them up like. Geez. They're on school. You know, and I was on that. Trash. Right. And, uh. Six, seven years later. Walk into. You're still. I get you. So. It was like. Like. I don't. And you're probably scared of. So. And they come over there like, oh, well. We don't know. You know. Oh. Oh, you have it. Correct. It doesn't look. Like, huh. So. I had to. Yeah. I know. Yep. So that's.
There's nobody I can get behind your bed.
Yeah, it did, but it's. And I might. Just. Much. Well, so I. I think it. She's. I'm playing that. I'm. Here. I fear that all this is. I wish I. Oh, yeah. And it worked great. But. Actually, it was not. The. Yeah. So. Now it's. Oh, it was. Because like they say. You know. I'm. Yeah. It's all. I heard. It's really. Yeah. Whenever. Let down their. Yeah. Exactly. And then I did it again. I was here in your house. In my buddy's house. Two days, four minutes. You know. Shower time. I'm going to slap that underneath some. Going on a. Business stuff. Oh. I didn't know. I'm like. I was gone. Yeah. I was off for three days. Yeah. So I. I didn't tell them. I said, they're all those. They're next to me. It's fine. Sounds fine. I told them. I said. Right. Okay. You. But. Yeah, so. Six months. Drivers. My. Yeah, you're like, you know, yeah. 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 I'll get. Cold weather from kind of a field inside. Come here. But it's mainly the left wing. That's the one that. I under. There's a story like behind it. I didn't go to. Look. So. About six months. I was missing. So. He didn't say. It was, uh. Like. I've been forced. I really feel. Few things. And screening. Down. So. And. Brother, I got, um. Yeah. I went. I don't wanna protect. I went away. I worked. Handkerchief. Face mask. Oh. I thought. I was. There. I'm. Turned on. And then I got. Yeah. I got the. Cause I did.
At least you lost. Propositions.
You're gonna have socks. Saw that. Now. It also pulled out. Oh, yeah. Why? I. Told everyone. Everybody talking. He means. I. See that? Go with that. So. So. Not me. Stupid. What? My best. I know that. Smart. I didn't see it. I was. I was. Oh, yeah. It's like. It was. So you're talking. Now you're. Yeah. Why? Why? To. You. You. Probably. Yep. That. Project. Yeah. Um. Yeah. If. Sure. Yeah. It's not. It's. The nothing was early. And I got. And. Those people. Most early. Three. You. And then if you got. I was. Start. I mean, that, that went. That would have been. Yeah. I. Yeah. So. So. Yeah. Yeah. We should. We should. Yeah. You know. To make it. And then. We. I. Sorry.
They all be crazy. We're.
That's why we are. Yeah. Gee, and they were. They're. They're. They're.
They're.
Just. Well. Yeah. Yeah. I love. I. She. Oh, man. I was. We. Everybody. That's. It's. It's. I. 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 It's. It's. Yeah. So. You never know. The one was. Yeah. I'm. And you know. I know. That's. That's. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Wasn't. Yep. Why? Six. And. What? You know. Well. You know. That was. Yeah.
And. That's. Bill. If. You.
Oh. For that.
So we said. Right. Four.
Well. Whatever those are. I think that's one. My. I have. See.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
So. It's. Said. It's in what? As I learned. It says. Like this.
I. Say five. Five. Out there. No.
I don't know. Yeah. Or. Outside.
Like. I got.
I wasn't. Well. Did, did, did we want to talk about why there are? That's what it is. That's where some diversity areas with one that have. Only one thing.
Can you see? Seems to be a theme.
Yeah, so, um.
Okay, Megan's got that. Well, Michelle was the one who identified it first. Oh, I didn't see. Yeah. So the theme is where you have a choice. So I'm gonna take this example of these two. Um, we believe the needs assessment has been presented according with their. Or any research evidence or testimony. And then here, we believe that the needs assessment has presented the additional third party feedback. You have one and two. So this isn't even a majority council that appointed us on this pair. But these two are not the same thing. And that, whenever that happens. You don't have those pairs or those threes. Normally, your ones are twos. And they don't add up. So what, what makes me. A bit hesitant, just to make, take the four and cut it off. Is that if these things that you are the one and twos are the things that you are circling around. When you're having discussions about this. Then. It hasn't been resolved. It hasn't been resolved. Thank you, Michelle. And, and maybe this is not the exercise to do that. Maybe that's the next step. But I definitely think that you all have a point that four and above are things that you all agree on. You can take those as guiding principles and set them aside. I think the other thing, the, the next discussion is whether. These things where it's, you know, one, two, one, two. And we can go over those. Whether you need further talk about those or. And, and I haven't been part of those conversations to know whether to have that. Have an opinion as to whether those are the things that are catching up the decision making.
I think if we're even, if we're all given ten dots, although we got three, that's the overloads. We should. One on our list.
And then.
I will have to come back to it. It's missing. It'll be obvious that it's missing. But. I would start with, well, three on. Building. That's the goal. It's all the number. Rather than. But.
I think. Yeah, no, I think that's a good point that. If there's sticking, you know, if the goal, if the point of this was to resolve sticking points. Perhaps it's what the exercise is resolved. Uh. Maybe not all of them. Uh, or at least not all of them. Uh, I mean, I, I, I mean, one on the ground. Well, obviously, for example, I did not enjoy either eleven or twelve. Because I think in order to do that. I would need to know what is, what is the list of the needs assessment we're popping out there. And who are we considering to be third party, research, evidence, successful. Mm-hmm. So I need like definitions to make sure I consider the same list of needs assessments. Even though we don't have that binder, I would like to make sure we're saying. We're talking about the 2015 part in architecture thing. We're talking about the recent. My. Or we're talking about this other thing. And, you know, this, we don't consider them. That would be third party because this reason. Um. So I agree that there's. The intuition that those are pressing points that we'll need to work through later on. I, I agree with that. Um, and I just, I guess I'm going on what I would need to know more of to be able to speak to either of them.
I agree. I think those that we, I think naturally gravitated towards having. All of our speakers are more sort of really the principles of what we believe that should be our. North star. I think the other ones are sort of still, some of them to me actually fall under the problem category of. Is this something? So one of those categories that we need to talk more and ask out more and things like that. So. Um, I like the idea of going with. Those four, a lot of sort of our guiding principles and that. Making sure that we, we can note up the other ones, we incorporate them into our conversation as we move forward.
I think we're all paying with the stuff. Did you? Does that decide? Oh, yeah. So. I wasn't there. But. Yep. Yep. That's our lucky seven.
Nice.
Is it a seven or a one? So, um, the idea is is we have a, an item on tonight's agenda. Um, of the regular meeting agenda. Uh, to then adopt these. The. Seven. Um. They, they can get here. So we, uh. To. Okay. It was number one, two, five, eight. Uh. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. One, two, five. One, two, five. Eight. Sixteen, seventeen. Correct. So then we move on to the next steps. Um. We, you know, have our, our setting guiding principles. Is the next topic of discussion then. A dive into the ones where there was not consensus. And figuring out why and what information is, or what sticking points there, there are involved in those. That's. Why do you thought? Do you agree? About?
I think, I think. More. On. Uh, it's. Phenomenal. He's. There. Um. I think the problem statement, we take some of those topics. The needs assessment, like it was clearly. One relative there. Figure out. What are we, what are we all going to accept here? Obviously. I don't really have the time, like, refining any other. But I didn't. The. Can we get out of?
Oh, yeah. The. It says that after we. Do. Question. Something comes up. I mean, that was. I got it. This. So. You. You. I think. I don't.
That is, um, what you want. I can give you a couple. Or go through the, the proposal I put or suggested project. Um, so to me, sort of every project means sort of like a project charter, um, of. Giving us a suggestion, you know, basically a guideline of what we are doing. Um, so this is not a, of course, final product. This is, this is suggestion. I, um, picked a template that I very regularly, pretty much every day, use at work. And, um. Try to plug in what we know and what we have been working on sort of into them as a project charter. So a project charter usually talks about the overview, why we are doing this, the problem statement. Um, a little bit more diving into what we are trying to resolve. Basically, the objectives are what you're trying to get out of it. Um, there's scope of it, what is in this book, what is out of the scope. So that will guide us, make sure that we are focusing on what we need to focus on. Um, who are our stakeholders that we need to reach out to, have a conversation with. Um. Who is the project team that is actually doing it? Um, expected to success, um. And what, what is the success criteria? If this project is successful to us, what is the outcomes we want to see? And usually a timeline of key milestones. Uh, so that's what I have put together. This is absolutely a draft. Um. I, um. My goal was to just, um, put something. Um, and in sort of a general way to be able to be encompassing. And not really, um. Pushing us one way or another. That's, that's not the point of this. It is really to overall capture what we are trying to do. Um, and what are the things we want to get out of this? Um, making sure we are in line. Um, what are the categories? Um, I call them the categories, the, the category that we want to talk about, uh. Relative to the fire station issue. Um, in the timeline, I actually sort of, um, worked it down that we spent few months different sessions. Um, going through those need categories and have a conversation. I see some of these points that we were part of this guiding conver- uh, principal conversation. And easily follow up in those need categories. Um. Whether this is something that eventually needs a ballot. You know, going on the ballot or not. Um, that was kind of like part of our conversation. So I wanted to put that down here. It's not necessarily what I'm saying. It's going to happen. It was just mainly to give us sort of a timeline idea. Um. What we are doing. Uh, so definitely it's something that as the. As the council, we can talk about. It gives some structure to our, um, activity and that was the main reason for it. Um. I'm, you know, really open to, uh, feedback and suggestions for each of those, um, areas of it. But mainly sort of suggesting a structure that we can plug.
Well.
Yeah. Yeah, I actually like. Put this together. And. Yeah. Um.
How do you distribute the two existing designs? Whether they can. Yeah. So. Have you seen the video? Everything at all? Do you, you know? Completely change your side? Have you been? Yes. Proving myself.
So I would say to me, that can be a neat category and, um, classic format or design. Um, really what I was thinking about the session of neat categories, um. So in the scope, um, I said, guiding by our guiding principles, which we, um, and want to do tonight. The session of neat categories, those were the ones that came to my mind. There could be areas of it that we say, oh, we don't think that's a neat category. There could be additional ones. To me, those were sort of like pockets of discussion. Um. Alignment with the fire and injector area fire department protocol agreement. And information request from experts if needed. So those were sort of things that to me is in the scope of the project. I could be missing areas. So if there are other areas you feel that is a spoke of this project that needs to be spelled out. Um, we can ask for that. But really, needs this, needs categories to me were those points that we're gonna take. You know, at each meeting progress, and we just pick a topic and have a conversation about it. Um, to give us some direction. That was my thought. And I would think that along with those, we get stakeholder input as well. So for example, if if we say living quarters is a topic of discussion for this meeting. Um, we could have, if anybody in the public or part of our stakeholders have input that we have not heard. They can join them, give input on that. Um, but also public can come in anytime that we have this on the agenda and give us feedback, right? We could also do other ways of gathering feedback. But that's why I put that the session of neat categories on February June. For example, along with the stakeholder input from those problem categories, there are. If along the way, we in a pocket, one more expert information, we ask as we go, but. And then we have deliberations in July. Because if we need, and we decide as a sample that these people want a ballot. The language to be there and argue for the ballot in the round, potentially, if that's what the direction the council wants.
Well, I do remain. I mean, I need to. Let's. Maybe. That's I got a question right now. I'm. That's that would be one way to get. Talking about.
If this is a structure, um, that we want to see, the project charter we want to see. I would say my suggestion would be that as a sample, we spend some time on it to refine it. So we can use it as our vice for this project.
Yeah. Next. Next. Twenty fourteen. Um. But. That is what I need to go is to count down the number of years. Uh, for thirteen now, fifteen, so we should probably be. I have a lot of studies I can on.
Yeah.
Yeah. You do that, right? And can I, and by the way, I think I think we could come up with. Also. Um, how. Where are or, you know? Those. We want to do that. Um, say.
Yeah, I'm trying to do more time to help two stuff or final. So that we all. For your next step. Yeah. And when we do that step, it's like, right, I guess. Part of the problem that they were asked.
You want to go up there? Is it higher or so?
Uh, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, like, I could see, but like, I could see the problem. And I don't know, we think about also. I have. Do you think something you say or something? Like, we're gonna be about that. Uh, more with the. I know. Start. I think my. I mean, for example, to say, like, well, it's like February, the month of February will be your health. And we do. And Martha is reviewing your. After. And then I can. I'm like, doctor, that reality, because I want you to. I want to be the. The. And then to getting only you or you make one side and that would prove the. You in the left side. And then sort of get over there and together that maybe even developing the schedule a bit, uh, two days. Because we're gonna have a lot of.
So a question for you is that in your mind, you have to design review or review? Have in mind that those designs are representing a set of problems? And we want to see where the set of problems that there might be a third option for each of those categories?
Of course, they had like this to have an concise problem statement, so that I review. There's so much work that went into those plans to design. I don't want to start to ground up those, you know, to get to those. So I just want to make sure it appears and what the problem is. And review the latest thinking of of few of the problems, the problem, whether the rest of those problems.
Mm hmm.
That's that's how we align that problem statement. And if at that time, we do also need a third, fourth, fifth option. That can be that that's. That it works. Now, so I'm open to alternatives. I would like to start by reviewing the switches that already got the code in light of this process. It's going to be the highest problem. And so that's why I think the timeline beyond that to me is much easier. I don't know what. Company online.
So I I would not. I find I wish you to start from from. I feel there is a lot that has to be done. Um. I'm just, maybe it can be me. Uh, that can be the. After we talk about finalizing this, sort of at first. They will, we have a conversation if the council would like as sort of like. One of those categories of, you know? This, these two, evaluation of these two. Um. Plans that were proposed, right? Um. Problem statement, I don't know if we need the the whole one to go through problem statement. I think the more we try to detail the problem and the parameters of that. Um. I think our pro- problem is. To me, that's sort of this general statement that I put, but I'm more than happy that we go through it at least a little bit and try to add something to it. Um. But. My experience has been that the more we try to, um. Put details into a problem statement, it basically is taking us doing the entire project, right? The argument of trying to to get it there. Um. So I think, um, if my suggestion would be that, um, if there are. Be that on that, maybe if you wanted to send that to me, I can put that together sort of for each of these categories. And, uh. Combine them so we can go from there and have a base to work on for this, um, chart.
Next. Uh. See, I'm gonna just throw some comments up here with this. Um, I would pose a simple problem statement. The current Dexter Fire Station is functionally obsolete. Bridges are functionally obsolete, but still functioning. People can drive over them, basically put a weight on it. It's bringing. Drop net. Uh. When we get to discussion of needs categories, I think it's essential that we we get some outside source. Um, since that demonstrates there's been, there's a differing opinions, whether or not you can trust the expertise of our fire chief, essentially. Um. So that when we're talking and having our discussion about location, capra storage, living quarters, EMT storage, that we have some input from someone who designed fire stations. So we're not trying to design a living quarter like we would for us. But we try to incorporate that. We had one, uh, about a year and a half ago. Um, we ought to do that again. I would also recommend for stakeholders that we include the firefighters. The actual firefighters. I know that's a bit can be tricky because it's it's organized. Like a military organization where it goes up to the top, and the top is a spokesperson. And so there can be some tension. Like when I would go on tours, the chief would bring me in and. To one of the workers, you kind of nod, like, it's okay to tell them whatever you want. You could you could pick that up at one of the one station. Um, so I I understand that it's is a tricky widget to sort through, but they're the ones who are actually going to be living there. But we did the same thing here with this building where the design team met with staff who's actually going to be using it. So that's important. Uh, for the timeline. Well, I guess before I jump to the timeline, one thing I say, even though we have two plans. Before we start dissecting, I think it's important to have an understanding of how those different, how these different areas affect the design? And how they can impact the how those functions before we jump back into what we got. Um. And for the timeline. Uh, I would say. If we do want to get feedback from an architect, remember that's going to take probably about four to six weeks. Longer side if we want them to design something from scratch from somewhere else. Uh, for that, we work in there. That's all I got. Okay. Well, it is about seven. I do think this should be the topic of our next workshop. Um. So now I'm. So I'm very. The. I'm. It's not a fire. We're going to work out. It's all good about this. For the next step, I I just. Over the timeline. That is. For the next one. I did. Do that point. We have a further. Other project. We're looking at. And then. Also. Does anybody need to do the. And then just a bit. I won't go find the. Figure fourteen. Right? Okay, following in order?